All right, I'd like to call this special meeting of Byron Independent School District 531 to order. A roll call?
Attendance.
Okay, attendance please.
Yep, Lisa?
Here.
Carrie?
Here.
David?
Here.
Nadia?
Here.
Kelly?
Here.
Alicia?
Here.
Jeremy?
Here.
Now we need to make an approval on the agenda items. Is there anyone that would like to make a motion on the approval?
A motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, a motion and a second has been made.
I have to do a roll call so that Maria?
Roll call.
Okay. Alicia?
Yeah.
David?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Carrie?
Aye.
Lisa?
Aye.
Jeremy?
Aye.
All right, and now the discussion of the 25-26 budget adjustment recommendations.
So, last week when we met, I went through the budget adjustments and started with last year and into this year. Also then, at the end of last week or on Wednesday morning, I sent out a presentation to the staff, to the parents and community members who are on our list, and did a video, a 15-minute video, not the most exciting listening me talk, but did a 15-minute video regarding the budget adjustment recommendations and kind of reasons behind it. So, I will kind of go through that again briefly, and then if you have questions along the way, we can do that as well. So, the first one is the staff members. So, we have 12 teachers who are not all reductions and cuts. Some of them would be retiring or leaving that we know of and may not be replacing them, or we're replacing them at a part-time because we don't have enough sections in that area, maybe for a full-time teacher, but we do have some where we might have to do some overloads, but we are saving money. And some of it also at the K-5 level is because, as you noticed with our enrollment, as we've been talking about quite a bit, is our enrollment is going to be, seems to be, appears to be down compared to, in kindergarten compared to last year, as well as our other grade levels are not at the 180 mark that a lot of grade levels are at. So, it's part of it is downsizing and having to do that. And then, I should say, right sizing, so we make sure that we have the students and teachers at the right size and that, unfortunately, that does mean reductions in staff, so there are some, again, that are reductions. At the middle school and high school, we have fewer of those because that's where our larger populations are. That's where our sixth grade right now has 208 kids, so next year they'll have 197 in sixth grade and 208 in seventh grade. So, there isn't a lot of reductions at that point. So, and then also, two counselors. We would have a counselor at the high school. We have three there presently. We would reduce one of the counselors at the high school. At the elementary level, we have a counselor at the primary, a counselor at the intermediate, and then we also have social-emotional pairs at each school. What we would be doing is, and then we have two counselors at the middle school. Because of reductions and their licensure, we would be moving one of the elementary counselors to the middle school, so they would still have two as well. And then we would have one counselor at the primary or the K-5 level, as well as keeping the SEL pairs. We also are working on, or we will be having our social worker move to the intermediate school to be actually support and have some, a case who will there to be able to work with as well. She's district pride, so she would have to leave at some times throughout the week to work with high school and kids and other kids throughout our district. But again, we're trying to put as much as we can in that area as well. And then also, we have, and I haven't heard back yet, from Fernbrook or some other outside agencies for, that have, we've had therapists in our buildings before about getting therapists back in our buildings again as added support. As you heard and as you know, we're also recommending to go to one licensed school nurse at this time. And again, what we would do is have, and hire back two health aides, but when we do post them, we would post for LPNs and RNs to have that experience and have that licensure behind them, but they would be on the staff, on the staff contract or agreement and not on the teacher's agreement. And so, other school districts follow the same type of model. We would have a person in every health office, and then our LSN would be housed presently. They're housed or they're working a office, one at the primary school, one at the middle school, a health office, so a lot of times they're not able to get out. So, having one LSN model, that person would be housed at the primary school and then be able to float and do the training, do IEP meetings, do some of the things that they need to with our students for MA billing and so forth. And then also, if a health aide is gone, they could fill in during that time. But again, we would post it, as we posted, we would post it four, and hope that we would get LPN or an LPN or an RN licensed nurse, experienced nurse, which other districts do, and they've been able to find people as well at the same type of rate pay that we would be putting out for that. So, and then reduce tech specialist. Halftime, we would reduce some days for the receptionists, going from 190 days to 183 days, so they would be there two days before school starts, two days after the school year ends, and student contact days. We would recode a pair of the special education, which gives us some money back, and then we're moving the elementary AP/AD to have a dean or a athletic director back at the high school and moving that to a dean position, which is a TOSSA position, teacher on special assignment. It's part of the teacher contract. So, we would be doing that. It depends on who applies and gets that position, would depend on if we would save any money that way, so that's not in the figures that you would see. Any questions before I move forward? We can come back to at the end as well, so.
I'd like to discuss that as we go through, if possible. I'll start. I think, I think it's maybe safe to say that I'm speaking for all of us, and I say it would be remiss not to sincerely thank our administrators and staff that worked tirelessly to put these reductions together. We know we asked you to do things that we all know aren't what's best for our staff and not best for our students, but it's just the position we find ourselves in, so thank you for doing that really, really hard work. I think it's clear that this list was made with a lot of care and thought and consideration of impact in many, many ways. I have a lot of questions. I have questions about most of the items on the list, and so I don't want to dominate the conversation. I think it's important that our community and everyone hears from all of the board members tonight, but I'll let other people talk first, but I do have questions about most items.
Do you want to start with any of yours, Alicia?
Sure, sure. So, I think if we start with the first item on the staff reduction list was the seven K through five teaching staff. I also just really want to clarify, a lot of my questions were questions we received from community members, and so I might already know the answer, but I think it's important we have the discussion out in the open, so everyone kind of understands our thought process. One question we asked was if we could see specific scenarios or examples of how staff reductions will impact the daily school experiences. So, in K through five, we were presented with two potential scenarios, and I know a lot of this could change, right, depending on enrollment and things like that, but I don't, did everyone have a chance to review that email that had the two scenarios? Okay. It's my understanding that the pros of the scenario where we keep the kindergarten specialist as is and then transition to a first through fifth grade model for the rest of the specialist coverage, so that would leave us with one music teacher, two art teachers, and three PE fitness teachers. If I'm wrong about any of this, please correct me. This is just my understanding of the information that I've been reading. So, to me, the pros are that we get to maintain that amazing kindergarten discovery program that we all know and love and appreciate, and we get to keep three additional teachers employed and still save money. The cons I see with that are that our students will have a lot less time in music, and instead they'll have more time in PE and art. I guess my concern or a piece that I think we need to discuss is when we think about like a well-balanced classic education, I think music and art are very important components of that, and I feel like we currently have PE and fitness, and adding PE enrichment feels like we're losing, we're losing something there for our students' curriculum. I'm not saying it's not the best choice, I just think it's a consideration we need to consider and maybe talk about. It feels a little bit inequitable to me in that accessing music outside of school is expensive and time-consuming, and so that part stinks, but yeah.
But we also need to weigh it against keeping three more teachers.
Right, right.
One item that I wanted to add to this is that, is it correct that the innovations teacher will be gone with this model?
The innovations is moving into a classroom, yes.
The innovations teacher will be employed as a, to provide regular services?
Yes, because of seniority, he would move into a regular classroom.
But in addition to what Alicia just said, that we're going to have reduced music coverage, right, we will also not going to have additional classes for innovation?
For first and second grade, yes.
For first and second grade. Just something again, also, as bad as not having enough music, right, it's something that we need to, will impact some kids.
Right.
And we need to make sure that once we have resources back, we can institute those programs back. But yes, thank you, Alicia, for forcing what we've heard from about that item.
And then, does anyone else have anything they want to say about that model?
Oh, so we'd be, so the music teacher is retiring.
Correct.
Correct, okay, so we would have to hire another music teacher, so we're not going to replace that music teacher.
Right, and so the first model or scenario is that we don't replace the, excuse me, the music teacher that's retiring.
Okay, and so do we have teaching, I mean, we have a?
We have one music teacher.
Okay, okay.
So, one more kind of add to that, number one. It would be very helpful, I think, for myself and maybe for the community members to understand, of those 12 cuts, how many are retiring and we're just not replacing?
There's one that's retiring.
Okay.
That we're not replacing, and there are two that are leaving that we know of from the high school. One's on a, and so there are two at the high school that are leaving that we are not replacing one and we're partially replacing the other.
Right.
So, three people who are retiring or leaving, and then nine people who will be cut?
Yes.
Yeah, that's a good point.
The other part, I just want to remind you again, as number one, or as, that's the proposal that the leadership team is coming with, is as we look at our reductions and the cost of the reductions, that you see is the one with the kindergarten specialist still in buildings. It's also because we had reached our $1.6 million task or kind of our task, and then we were trying to save as many teachers as possible.
Yep.
So, if you don't do that, and again, and that's part of the next conversation, I guess, but if we were to go and not have the kindergarten specialist move, then we would be losing, we would be losing three teachers, and so right now we're trying to hang on to as many staff as possible with that first, first one. And it was, you know, that second scenario was brought up because people asked, you know, what are some other opportunities or some other things, so that's why they brought for it. But the leadership team is recommending and figuring into those numbers that we would keep the K specialist and then try to keep as many teachers as possible while still making, being able to make reductions in that area.
And so with the 1.6 reduction, 1.6 million reduction that we're planning on, does this, how soon, how soon are we going to be able to get to our 8% fund balance? Does that come into play, like the 1.6 and how soon it is? So, if we cut less than 1.6, it'll just take us a little bit longer?
It depends.
Yeah.
And the reason why it depends is that it depends on what happens with the legislature, depends on the unfunded mandates, it depends. What we did was if, when Julie Sink was here, when we first started going through this process and coming up with the number for the board, is we said that if it was, everything else was equal and we didn't add any other expenses to next year, then 1.6 would probably get you to about a 5% fund balance. That's with everything equal and no other expenditures went up, you know, or anything like that. Now, remember that we do have five contracts to settle, and we don't know what's happening with the legislature regarding those mandates around the unemployment insurance and so forth. So, this way, the 1.6 gives cushion that you wouldn't be going in the hole next year and you wouldn't be closer to statutory operating debt. So, it's, it all depends, right? If you don't do the 1.6, you're getting closer to an opportunity that if those things come true, then you may not be balanced next year as a balanced budget. We're trying to give some cushion as what we could, and then like I said, whatever is not spent or have to be paid out then goes towards your fund balance, which again, if there's all nothing, it would be at 5% with the 1.6.
In my mind, we have to find a way to cut 1.6. I feel like there's so much unknown with the federal government and our state legislation right now that I think five, if we're, I think if we, even if we cut the 1.6, I think the 5% is probably a pretty rosy outlook, depending on how all that shakes out. But, and then the, so the second scenario, my understanding is that we would maintain the same specials programming that we currently have in first through fifth, and the cons are that the kindergarten discovery program and the kindergarten model would be greatly affected. Basically, we would, the, we would lose our special programming we have for kindergartners, which does attract students for us. It would require hiring a music teacher, so it's my understanding that that would save us less money as well. Is that true?
Not necessarily, because again, it could save us more money because you're, you're releasing three teachers.
Right, right.
Right, and then, but you still have to hire one back.
Right.
And so, and the one that is, you know, is the one who's retiring is a veteran teacher.
Right.
And so you look at that as on the pay scale and so forth, and then you hire one back, you don't know where, how much that would be.
Right.
And then when you start, but in the end, you're still releasing three teachers.
Right.
Right, and so, when you look at the difference, it may be a $30,000 difference, maybe, but again, there, like I said earlier, there were the reasons why we, we are projecting or proposing the first model, so.
So, you think it could potentially be $30,000 more cost savings for the second scenario?
Possibly, because you're, because there's two people who are, who would be totally replaced.
Okay.
Because we'd be bringing one back. We would have to take those teachers from the kindergarten specialist, move them into classrooms. Those three teachers, then we would have to tell them they no longer have a position, so we wouldn't be paying for those salaries, but we would have to hire back.
Right.
And possibly, possibly look at other overloads as well, because it'd be a K-1/2s, they would have a K-1/2 building, and then the 3-5, they would be separated, so.
I'm sorry, $30,000 more just for the K through five program, or let's hear those scenarios A and B financially? Would there be any difference financially between A and B?
There could be with B, because you are releasing those two teachers. There could be about a $30,000 savings to that.
Additional savings.
Additional savings, but again, you are releasing three teachers to be able to get that through.
Right, but we're impacting a, we're drastically impacting the quality of the K program.
Yes.
Correct.
Yes, or $30,000.
Right.
And we do have to be able to attract new kindergartners?
Yes, right.
Because we already have low numbers for incoming kindergarten.
So, can I ask an organizational question? So, how, the purpose of this meeting right now, right, is to vote for this packet of reductions, right?
Yes.
There is a long list. Do we, and as we're discussing one by one, do we want to maybe interject and say something where we vote for each item?
Nope, because what will end up happening is at the end, we are having this discussion, and then at the end, the next agenda item will be to take action on a resolution, and during that resolution then, once it's brought forward, you can then at that point say, you know, you're going with the whole package, or you'll go on to take this, this part out or this part out, that sort of thing. So, we don't vote on these things now, this is just a discussion, and then when the resolution comes, that's when you would have to decide at that point what you would want to take away.
And at the resolution, we can say, we can say that we approve all the items but one or but two or?
That's what happened last year, the board approved everything, but except for the LSN, and that was something that was part of the resolution when that would mean.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Does anyone else have any feelings about the two scenarios?
I would prefer to, A.
If a scenario A?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Kindergarten.
Yeah, yeah, sounds good. And then that's in line with the recommendation too from the experts, so, okay. The next question that I asked was, will there be adjustments to class sizes, schedules, or elective offerings in the middle school and high school? And the response was actually very, very optimistic. We'll have class sizes near our target in the middle school, and just to be clear, that's because we have a lot more students in those classes. Part of the cuts to primary were right sizing and cuts that we would have had to make kind of regardless of the financial situation. And then high school will have larger class sizes, but the response was that we were able to maintain much of our profile of graduate programming. We do have to reduce some language offerings, correct? Potentially?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yes.
And then the next question.
Can I just clarify?
Yeah.
We're not reducing the, we're not eliminating the language.
Right.
The offering, we are reducing the number of sections that would be available.
Correct. Yeah, and I, when I talked to Malia today, it sounds like it, like most students, it sounds like probably will still be able to get the electives that they prefer, which is incredible news, really. Okay, the next question, please interrupt me if you have anything to say, okay. This year, some programs were cut that weren't included, to my knowledge, on a formal list, such as gifted and talented enrichment at the intermediate school and boys volleyball. I am not questioning the decision to cut these programs, but I'd like to understand if we should expect further reductions like these in the coming year, ones that haven't been specifically outlined yet. Can you please provide insight into how these decisions are being made and what we might anticipate moving forward? And it sounds like the gifted and talented program and the intermediate was more a result of staffing changes and not wanting to hire or spend any additional money, especially last year when we were, we had a lot of unknowns, and that we, administration anticipates bringing that back next year, so that hopefully will just be a temporary pause. And boys volleyball was a club-level sport, and so part of our policy, which this makes perfect sense, is if our fund balance is below 8%, we can, it's irresponsible to add more official sports, as much as that hurts and we would love to support the boys volleyball team. And lastly, that no other programs are set for reduction currently, but if a staff member leaves, then their role in associated programs would be evaluated, and the leadership team would talk to the board to kind of come up with a plan about how we're going to address that. So, I thought that was really reassuring. Let's see. Some of this we've already talked about. The next questions I have are related to the LSN reduction. Does anyone else have concerns that they would like to share first?
Just with the overwhelming response we got from the community, it's concerning, I guess I, I'm concerned that we're replacing an LSN with health aides. We can, we can hope and wish that they will have an RN licensure or LPN, but we can't guarantee that. So, we're replacing one licensed skilled nurse with two health aides that just have to have a high school diploma. So, we have, we have people in each building, we have bodies in each building, but we don't necessarily have a skill set in each building. So, that is concerning to me.
Agreed.
Okay, you're saying a worst-case scenario that we don't know.
Right, and we don't.
You're saying we're planning for a best case, but you are counting on worst case and?
But if you're counting on a best case, you know, I mean, you're counting on a best case. I'm counting on a worst case.
I'm not commenting on your, your addressing scenario.
She's introducing a realistic case.
Correct. Yeah, I think that's.
No.
Why, why no?
Why no?
We don't know what's realistic. What's realistic is that we put the, put the job listing out, and yes, while we are hoping for our and our LPN, also keep in mind where we are located. We're in one of the most medical-heavy areas in the country and the world, and there may be somebody that potentially is looking for an opportunity to not be in a scenario where they're working 40 hours a week, 12 months a year. They may want an opportunity to be in a situation where they're working in a school which better fits their work-life balance. There is an opportunity for a LPN or RN, there's also an opportunity for a high school diploma. We don't know, we cannot plan for the best, we cannot plan for the worst, and all I'm hearing is the assumptions that we cannot do anything over the worst-case scenario. And I'm just commenting that that's not the case.
Safety concerns aside, I don't see evidence that we have really evaluated the revenue that our LSNs generate, so unless I have that information, I have a hard time supporting this reduction.
I am still hanging up on even the cost of the savings. I cannot comprehend a situation where with a readily available part-time LPN and RN employment around the corner, people would consider less, competition that is less than that. Our banking on people being willing to be underpaid, that's, that to me personally sounds exploitative, and I don't think we should be considering that as a realistic scenario. So, with four people on the current model, why just not keep that model versus having five people that may only not result in savings and also questionable reimbursement?
The medical reimbursement is, is also, I mean, that's a huge factor. One person.
Yeah, it's a huge factor, and we, so far from the research we've done, so far, we, my understanding is that health aides are only able to bill for certain limited number of items compared to our RNs or LPNs.
And that is, as, as I put out to you, that it is something that we will have to move forward with, is to change that in our support staff contract and to be able to have, when I talked with Denise Flynn from ZED who does our MA billing, we would have to make them into their own category, and then we could then bill, do MA billing for the services that are delegated to them from the, from the LSN. And so, this again is having five people, making sure that there is someone served in each office to go out for that LSN and RN. This is what the school districts around us also have, and I sent you the, I sent some of them late today, was kind of the range of costs. We are not that far off with ours when you look at that, and even if we added $4 an hour, our LS, our, our LPNs and our RNs, our health aides, work, you know, slightly beyond the school year, not much more. So, if we had $4 an hour for those to what we already are giving, we would be definitely towards the higher end of that range that I sent, and it would be about a 50, $5,900 difference really, because as they, again, as Jeremy had said, it is flexibility if they have kids and they're old enough, but they want to be home when it's, on student If they have kids and they're old enough, but they wanna be home on, when it's, on student contact dates, they're here. When the students are home, they're home. And they have their summers off to be able to do that. There are, and other districts have filled it with L P Ns and, and R Ns. And so, I just, and, and then we can do the billing for that. And it is a small part of, um, uh, of our billing. Unfortunately, Denise couldn't give me the exact numbers, um, for each person, but when you look at, I know two percent of one of our, um, last year, one of our, uh, L S N's, only two percent of her salary or her time was don't, was for, for that, or twenty percent and so forth. And so, I don't think, we, we do have all of our paras trained as P C As. And so, a lot of the things that we can charge for through M A billing is done through our paras, who are trained, um, through P, as P C As. And then also, um, you know, sped transportation, there's other ways that that money comes in. It's not, when you see that we bring in seventy thousand dollars, it's not all because of, um, the, uh, because we're only charging for L S N's.
But specifically, when we're talking about M A reimbursement or reimbursement in this context, we're only talking about the healthcare reimbursement that can be provided if a R N, L P N, or L S N provides the cares.
Correct.
So, um, as I asked questions about this, I, I'm an R N, I don't currently work, but I feel like I understand the roles. There were a lot of really alarming answers. Like, for example, we have an L P N currently in one of our buildings. And because they were coded incorrectly, we're not currently getting reimbursed from M A for those healthcare cares provided. That was alarming to me, that tells me that we don't understand, um, the way our nursing services reimbursement works and we need to do a better job doing that. And so, what I would really, there's, there's other examples I have too. Like, for example, um, sure, other areas, like area schools have similar models, but Cassin has one L S N, one L P N, and one R N. That's very different than one L S N and four health aides. Stewartville actually has one L S N, one R N, four health aides, two P R N health aides, and thirty-five P C A exam certified paras. That was from the L S N's from each of those schools. So, that's very different than saying that's a similar model to this. I.
From what I understand, oh, which is, excuse me, but their, their L P N's, for example, in Cassin and R N's, they're working in an office. They're housing, they're worked in a school.
Right.
And they're in there, just like our L P N's are listed and will be listed as an L P N or an R N. If we change the support staff model to be able to do that, so then that would, to me, that would be the same.
So, I think part of the confusion is the language that we're using is unclear. So, if I'm understanding this correctly, you're saying that when they, like, Cassin, for example, has one L S N and two health aides, but those two health aides are actually licensed nurses that can be reimbursed for the M A healthcare that they provide. That's very different to me.
And our plan is that you'll be able to do that next year.
Can you bring up the slide that has the wages? Cause I was surprised to see that, um.
No, I, I, that was, I, I just have these two.
Okay, let me see.
Those, those were for this, those were for your benefit. I'm not going to have other districts, I'm not gonna.
Right.
You know.
But there was proof that other districts were able to hire L P N's and R N's in these roles. So, I, it's for safety reasons, I would not be comfortable listing these positions as a health aide. I would be much more comfortable listing them as L P N's and R N's if this is something we decide to proceed with. I also think we need to figure out how we can audit our current billing and make sure we are maximizing our reimbursement, because I don't, we're, we're obviously not doing that. And I think we're leaving a lot of money on the table. And that could be funding our nurses.
So, do we have to have an L S N in the district all the time?
Yes, you, we, because we have more than a thousand students, we have to employ a licensed school nurse.
So, somebody, an L S N has to be there every single day. What happens if they're sick?
If they're sick, just like with teachers, we have people that are, have their R N license that have subbed before. If we were to hire a R N, then that R N could be, uh, they're responsible, cause they can still delegate as well. Sometimes, just us with teachers, um, we can't find subs and other people filling like office staff. And if there's an emergency, we do, again, have one L P N that's, that's presently in our district, um, that can be able to do that. So, you know, if that L S N is sick or on leave, we would just go out and have, we have people that we've called before to ask if they could sub. If not, then we, we make do with our office staff and so forth, so.
And I wanna be clear, I'm not disparaging health aides, like, we can't, like, R N's can't do their jobs without them in most situations. They're a vile part of providing healthcare. I just, I, I think, um, we need to make sure that they're appropriately supported, so they can safely do their job too.
And also that our communities be assured that they have support they need.
I mean, we lose two students and there goes our cost savings, right, so.
Mike, how many P C As do we have on staff that are surplus?
There, we're in the thirties. How much was that? Thirty-six.
What was the question?
Thirty-six, how many, how many of our paras are considered trained to be P C As and can be available? There's thirty-six.
Yeah, good.
And then each month, they turn in their billable time to the, um, office and then the L S N signs off on it, and then they turn that in for us to turn in to Zed.
Okay, good.
So.
Good.
So, if, so given what we've just heard, right, and to you, again, be assured of our community, would it be possible, or would, would you consider changing the, the two health aides positions? So, an R N or L S N as?
Yeah, absolutely, I mean, it says health aide, and the health aide is because they would be in the, cause they would be in the office. And then, but you would go out and get it, we would have a category for L P N's and R N's, and we would be out there looking for L P N's or, or R N's, but they're working in a school office.
Yeah.
Doing the things that our health aides are doing now.
Right.
You know, and so forth, but we would be putting that out there as kind of that requirement or preference, cause if we don't find somebody, we would still want to have somebody in there. But we would go first for the L P N's or R N's. And other districts have done that and been able to find people for that, so.
So, what that would mean, right, is that we, right now, would not know what type of a person, meaning, what type of an education we would receive for those roles. How can we? The purpose right now is to reassure the community that they will have support and, and care that, um, that they will be comfortable with. Can we? Can we have at least one of those two new hires be only an R N or L S N?
I think if we hire, uh, we wouldn't hire another L S N, right, cause we just keep our model we have then. But I think it would be, yeah, an R N, yeah, I think it would be reasonable to post for one R N and one L P N at the, at the rate of the health aide rate that we, that fits into the budget. And just see what happens. Or you could do R N preferred.
And if you had two R N's, you had two R N's.
Right.
But again, when you look at, um, some of those models or ranges, even the R N's, we were not that far off with the ranges and so forth. And that would be something we could come back with the, to the board as a support staff and say, well, here's the, here's the recommendation, the recommended ranges moving forward. And when we post for those, that's, we would be looking for that in that, in that range. And, and looking for an L P N or R N, um, first. But again, health aide are the ones that aren't licensed, but there, those, those four, I would contend, those four positions are in office, in health offices are doing very similar work.
Well, I understand, but it's very different when you can get reimbursed for care provided and when you can't.
I understand that too.
So, I think it would pay for itself, I think. And we don't know though, cause we're not tracking and we, so we don't know if it would pay for itself, but that's
Yep.
A different problem for a different day, but we do need to, I think, audit our reimbursement.
And that would be through time studies and so forth, and we can certainly do that.
Okay. Great.
I get that every cut is a tough decision. I guarantee you, if we sat and asked every one of the admin staff up here, if they thought this was a terrible idea for the district, I guarantee none of them would say yes. They would not give us a recommendation if they thought it would make the district worse.
I agree, and I trust, I trust them, I mean, they're the experts. And none of these are good for us, right? Like, you had, they had no good choices, no good choices.
Any other questions regarding this one? Then we'll go back to the other slideshow then. And any other questions with this slide?
The, um, recoding the para to sped.
Yeah.
Could you explain that a little bit?
Yeah, so, uh, we, we still have one general education para, um, that works with our reen teacher. What we would do is have them do some intervention work with our special, special education teachers. And what we can do then is bode their time, um, to our special education. And then, um, we get reimbursed through sped, through special education, uh, for that. So, uh, it really probably wouldn't be the whole time, but sometime it'd probably be, it's like a five thousand dollar difference. So, but, you know, that's, we're trying to do everything we can, so.
So, do we need to make a decision now about how we're going to approach that, or?
Approach which one?
Do we wait till the resolution, like the R N listing?
Nope, so, just, just know that that is our plan, is that when, if, if this were to happen, if we were to go with that model, which we're proposing, is that we would post it and we would post as an L S, uh, L, L P N or an R N. And, but we have to come up with that first in the support staff agreement. What does that look like, what category is that? So that we can get M A billing for that, then we would post for that. So, just know that that is part of the plan.
Okay.
And those, those, um, our L S N would still be housed in one area and be able to float. And though that L P N and R N would be housed in, in one of the buildings. So, we would still have people, someone in the, in their office at all times. And then be able to have that L S N do the training and the other things that they might need to do administrative wise and have the time to do so.
Okay. I think this is something that it would be helpful for everyone to share their, how they're feeling about that, making it an R N versus, or L P N listing.
Well, and the other thing too, I just, I wanna say one thing about, um, several of the emails that we got from the community. One of them, I'm just gonna read the section, but it's, "School nurses often deal with the social, emotional needs of students when the counselor is unavailable and are trusted adults for many students in their buildings that students confide in. They also have the skills to help students cope with mental health issues and have helped out in situations of mental health crisis in the absence of a school counselor. This nursing role could increase with the increased workload of the counselors due to the cuts in that area." So, I think that's something we really need to make sure we're aware of. Because the school nurses, I mean, they're not just putting Band-Aids on the kids.
Right. Right.
There's a lot more that goes into that than they're a trusted adult.
Right.
And a counselor.
Thank you for turning back to counselors, we missed that fine item. How many counselors will we have left?
We'll have two at the high school, two at the middle school, we'll have one for K five. We'll have a social worker, and they'll be working in the K five area. And we'll have two social, emotional paras, one in each building to help with, uh, the deregulation and, and what they, we have them on right now. So, that's, that's what we'll have left for counselors and mental health supports.
And then also trying to prep, to bring in private, so like a private paying therapist, just to make it easier for families to access, and kids to access.
And will be, being for the private pay?
Um, the, the families would, right, right.
What, what it, yes, what it does is, um, it's, it's so that chi, children don't have to leave school to go to a, a session, right? And so forth, and so that we have somebody there. They work with the kids on their case load, but in case of emergencies or something, or, or we need help with, you know, when it comes to asking questions and, and strategies, we're, they're able to do that. But, you know, they're not, we're not giving them a case load that's not theirs, that they own, sign up for.
So, not as equitable, but, um, better than nothing, yeah. How are you feeling about the nurse situation?
I guess the nurse situation, it'd be great if we could keep two, um, but we do need to be realistic. Bringing in the aides, I, I feel an R N or L P N is kind of what's needed. As long as we can kind of navigate that and just make sure the safety is at the top of the list. We need to do our best for the district, the children, and everyone involved.
I think it would be great if we could include the L S N in the, um, I don't know if it's possible, but include the L S N in the interview process or in helping select.
They would definitely be involved in that.
Yeah, great, great.
Cause they would be ones kind of overseeing them and training them, so.
Right, okay.
All right. Can I go on to the next one, or?
I think so, I think.
Okay, um, this is the target size, class size, um, so you've seen this before. Remember, our target size that the board approved is just, that's the target, it's not, uh, the exact amount. And so, as you can see, some school, some classes are, are less, some classes are lower than their target size, some classes are higher than their target size, and a lot of the right sizing had to be here. But again, we are not more than two or three over in a class. And hopefully, again, um, if, uh, as the district gets more financially stable and has a operating referendum, that you will be able to go out and hire more staff then at that time. And notice that we are at a hundred and thirty students here. I can tell you right now, we are, we're at a hundred and fifteen that are, uh, registered. And, but we still have some of the open role families that we haven't heard from yet. We'll be sending reminders out to them and maybe some others as well who live in the district. So, we're, we are still hopeful that we'll get to a hundred and thirty. And so, that's why we're even there at this time. But that, those are the class sizes across the bottom K through eight. Okay?
I have a comment about that, the first grade class size is high. And we did talk about that, I just want everyone to know that other options were worse. I just think it's important.
Okay, um, so this is with the athletic activities, so cut supply budgets. So, right now, you know, the booster clubs do give our, our, um, teams, um, budgets to work with and to get things. We also give them a supply budget, so each team would see a decrease in that area. The E T S is our strength training, that, um, families pay for some, the booster club pays for some, we pay for some. So, we would not be paying the thirty-six hundred dollars and, uh, teams would have to continue to fundraise or find money for that, either through boosters or pay themselves as a team. The eliminate huddle, that is our streaming service or the filming service that we would use. Teams use it as well, so they would be also using some of their booster money for that. But we would eliminate the, the streaming at this time. The reduced number of athletic coaches and by cutting athletes. This is going, again, to one position or one team at each grade level, which would decrease the number of coaching, the number of, of, of officials, uh, the number of transportation. And that is a estimate, um, from our athletic department, because it, we don't break it out necessarily into middle school and, and B squad or whatever. But by the number of coaches and the amount of transportation, it's about a four, we would estimate around a forty-two thousand dollar, um, savings in, in that area. Also then, um, no state tournament or clinic visits for our coaches that's on travel, a lot of times those are out of town and so forth, for a year. And then we would reduce or eliminate the, the dance program. We have five students who are part of the dance program and we have to have two coaches with them. So, that's part of that as well, so, as well as any competitions that they would have, so. Those are the ones that are being recommended, recommended, recommended from our athletic and activities area.
Um, quick question on the, reducing the number of athletic coaches by cutting athletes. The forty-two thousand, is that, so that's, you said busing?
Coach's salaries.
Coach's salaries.
And we don't know exactly how that would work out because of, um, again, what they get paid. Some of them will have longevity, some of them don't. So, and then transportation, depends how many away games they end up having, how many, they're having home games, how many officials, or how much do you pay officials, those sort of things. So, that's the best estimate that we could come up with if there were, um, one team at each level only.
Is that also including our, um, subsidizing them then too? Like, however many athletes, is that included in there? How, how would that work? Because we subsidize.
Right, it's about four, depending on the sport, it could be between four hundred and fifty to six hundred dollars a student for. Right, it's about four, depending on the sport, it could be between $450 to $600 a student for sports. And that's across seven through 12, right? And so would that be less? Well, it would be probably less, you know, but we still have the other sports, the other officials, the other transportation that would happen, so.
It just seems like that reduction would be higher than 42.
Again, it's one or it's just one or two teams, like, you know, so it's not a tremendous amount of.
And we're talking to the middle school level.
Well, and then it could be freshman level as well and so forth. So that ninth, 10th grade level as well, so, okay? And again, that's our best estimation.
I have a seventh grader and so I know and love many kids that that will affect. So I would like to spend a little bit of time talking about it. I understand the recommendation and I, I think I just feel like I need to ask the questions or at least talk about questions that we've talked about offline. Like we know extracurriculars are a vital component of our child's development. It's not just the sport, right? And I think it's also important to consider that these kids that will maybe be cut, like they might be some of the kids that really need it the most. And so one question was, well, could we just increase activity fees for all sports to make up for it? And it sounds like the increase per participant in all sports would be about $70 more.
Seventy to $100 probably somewhere in there, yeah, for every participant.
For of every sport. And we increased our athletic fees by $70 last year, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, and so our fees are already quite high.
The highest in the HFL.
But aren't they, okay, so aren't they around 200?
Around 200, what's ours is.
Right, okay, and I thought last year when we were talking about reductions and increasing in fees, I thought we were right in line, other schools were above us, other schools were below us.
Rochester maybe was above us, but in the area of the schools that we play and the schools that we are higher than the others.
We are, okay.
That could be a solution though. Yeah, like Mike said, it sounds like the sports cost each particip, cost a school about $400 to $850 per participant, which is a staggering number.
Well, let me clarify that, so if it's $450 per student, right, and they pay $200. We're still subsidizing the extra $250 to $400 per student, which is roughly around $700,000 overall.
Right, so it's not reasonable in my opinion to say like, well, we'll just let parents pay for the whole sport. If, you know, that was a question a couple of community members had, but it's way too much money.
It wouldn't be equitable for the second quarter.
Right, right. Another question that came up is can we eliminate busing to away games in order to preserve letting everyone play? I don't think that's an unreasonable thing to consider. Like we already, in middle school, we already drive our kids to practice every day after school. So as inconvenient as it is, we're used to kind of managing afternoon runs. I guess I would love to hear like what the concerns are or like, you know, specific concerns are about, besides the obvious, that it's a huge inconvenience.
Well, I can tell you the discussion that we had was exactly that. When you're having practices, some kids in the spring or in fall, they'll ride their bikes from one school to another or one field to another. Parents, you know, will sometimes be able to get them there or they'll carpool in a short amount of time. But when you're asking an entire team to go to Stewartville or go to Goodview or go to somewhere else, you know, to try to get, make sure everyone has a ride there and back and so forth, and asking parents to leave their jobs, be able to do those things. We even talked about, you know, that that becomes really difficult. And if you're going to have a program, you want to be able to get them to their games and so forth. And yeah, it is a big inconvenience and I know that's what youth sports probably do. But again, we just felt that it was important, because we did talk about that, but we thought it was important to keep the transportation piece there. It'll save, you know, it'll cost us a little bit of money, but in the overall picture, it's not going to be a huge part of the savings, so.
You would still need to have like the additional coaches and then all of that, so really it would just be.
That's not true though, in seventh grade, they have two coaches for 30 kids. So we will, they'll need two coaches regardless of how many kids they cut, correct? So like the number of coaches won't be reduced.
No, if there's one team, if they only need one team, they'll need, they'll have one coach. Because, because they are a program, I mean, you can't leave a whole program, I talked about the girls' dance, but you can't leave a whole program with just one coach. But you could, as a basketball program, you know, they practice, you can have one coach for that team.
Okay, so seventh grade could have one coach, eighth grade could have one coach, okay? I didn't realize that.
And so then you're eliminating those coaches, which are, you're eliminating those coaches' salaries and so forth.
Okay, okay. I don't know, does anyone else feel like we should consider other things or is everyone comfortable? I think it's a very reasonable recommendation, yeah, I just, you know.
Yeah, I was surprised that we didn't get working back from the community on middle school sports.
Yeah.
Can I go to the next slide?
Yeah.
Okay, so technology, we have some technology supplies, tech, technology licensing. This is seniors can bring their own device, but I also want to clarify that we do, we will have Chromebooks. But our Chromebooks are need to be, are up for leasing this year to get new Chromebooks. So what we would do is take the best ones of the previous, of the ones we have now and use those if seniors want to have their own Chromebooks or use Chromebooks from the school issue, they can. So if they don't have their own computers and so forth, they can do that. Otherwise, they can bring their own computer and work with our staff and go in through our servers and our firewalls and so forth, they would be part of that, we expect to do that. But it helps us then, instead of for this year, instead of buying four grade level sets and leasing four grade level sets of Chromebooks, we would have three sets for freshmen, sophomores, and juniors and then allow seniors to bring their own if they would like. But they, if they don't, then they would have, you know, the ones that are still working and are still good from this year. They just wouldn't be new ones. Any questions with this slide?
No, I think as long as we have a plan for students that can't bring their own, I think that's a good recommendation.
Adjustments to district wide, so reduce capital budgets. So we get some capital money every year and remember, capital can only be used for certain things and can't be used for consumables. But you can buy chairs and furniture and those sort of things with them. And so we get so much and our buildings get so much a year to spend. So between the district, cutting back on some district plans as well as taking away, I should say, reducing the amount that each building gets for some of their capital thoughts that, or capital needs, that we would save $20,000 on capital budgets so that we could use them to get some other capital things that we absolutely need or as a district, and then we're not taking the money out of, out of our general fund to be able to pay for those. So we would use our capital budget to help subsidize that. Reduce district office fees. As you know, that we've had four business officers, business directors and had to play and do some with some interims and were presently still there. And so that has cost us more in the long run than it probably has to just have a full-time person as well. We've also had because of things like data requests and so forth, we've had an increase in legal fees right now. And then you also are going out for a superintendent search and so forth. So those things are, are things that are part of our district office fees that come out there that you don't expect and but then you won't have those for next year. So Dan Pyan is confident that we, we could save at least $25,000 on things that are being paid for now that you won't be paying for, for next year. You'll still have legal fees, but not as much as we've probably had, had this year. And then grad credit is just a one credit for interns that work with us and we wouldn't be paying for that one credit. But we would still have our, we're still planning on doing our intern program. Reduce fees and operational costs. We have many things that, yes.
Just going back to the grad credit, do you think that'll dissuade any of the interns that are coming if they're not getting credit for it?
No, I think the biggest thing for the interns is they get their student teaching in the fall. And then they get a job every day here because we hire them as subs and we use them as subs and they work as interventionists if they don't, if they don't, not a sub that day. And they, they know that for that while they're out looking for a job, that they, they're getting paid every day and they're getting that experience. We just worked with WSU to have a one-credit class that we would offer them and we just wouldn't do that. They're not coming here for the one-credit class.
Okay.
So, and then we, again, we have been trying to do as much in-house and for operation costs with lawn service and snow removal and doing other things. So we believe that with equipment and getting essential stuff that Dan believes that we could reduce fees by up to another $65,000 or reduce costs in district-wide. Right now, as you have seen, that we are on track to, you know, save some money for this year. If we were to save 3% of what the budget says, that's around, I think it's 3% or even maybe less than that, $150,000. So that would then stay in our general fund and be able to be carried over to next year. Then we have some subscriptions. One of them is for technology and our finance class. The other one is for, is through the high school and that's our library system. And they would have another way to have kids check out books and so forth through our, through that system. And then require some chargebacks to Community Ed as they get fees. They would pay for some custodial time, some utility time and so forth. And so those are what those adjustments are.
And so right now with the expenditures, oh, you know, never mind, it's 2024. I was thinking it was 2025, I was just wondering if we're on track to spend, to save that.
Well, for this year, no, it's, it's, 24, 25 this year, we're on track to save the $150,000. According, you know, and so that would, that's not, that would be money you could carry over in the general fund for next year. So we're counting it as part of the, you know, because hopefully then we would also look at ways to save money again for next year, once the budget's approved and then what people need and you try to figure it out and try to stay within that budget or less.
Okay, and the cell phone payment, we think that we'll be able to find something.
Yes, the high schools, the high schools confident.
Okay.
Good, that was my question too, good.
Anything else? Okay, all right. Transportation, paid a ride within walking distance, remember, we started that this year. People who are residents who are within two miles of school, that's within the legal walking distance or travel outside two miles. But so if they were, if they want to be bused within that range, then it was, this year, we moved it to, we started it at $75 per child or $150 per family. Remember, we have 187, 173 school days. And so it was still less than a dollar a day for the entire family because that was the cap. And so then, this year, we're proposing to raise that to, by $50. So $125 per child, again, still for under a dollar a day to bus. And then that would move the cap to $250 for a family.
Question, is that all ages then, within two miles?
All ages, yes.
Okay, I was thinking I read something that it was like certain ages.
Well, no, I take K-5, I believe that's at a mile or three quarters of a mile, I'll have to double check.
Within that?
Yes, whatever the walking distance is, is what that would be.
Okay.
Also, increase transportation of open roll students. Remember that we have several open roll students who, we have a waitlist who can hop on our buses out towards the end of our, on the outsides of our district and they pay $400 presently, so we move that up to $500 for a student. And I believe we're keeping the max at $800 for a family. Charge K-8 students to attend games. So this hasn't been done in the past, but we would sell activity passes at open houses and stuff for $50 for the year so that as K-8 students come to games, they could, that we would charge them as well. We would not charge ninth through 12th graders because it is their high school, is their classmates, their, you know, and that's, that's part of that, that high school experience. Talked about the possibility of MA billing because of how we would be able to track that if we were to be able to add LPNs, LSNs, or excuse me, and RNs. And then also increase the.
Mike, can I pause, how did you come up with that 20K number for increased MA billing?
It was, I'm just trying to think off the top of my head why, how we did that. It was when we are looking at adding the person that back in the, in the office into the special education office to be able to do more of the tracking and so forth. We figured, Dan and, and the special education office figured that they could raise another $20,000.
Do you know what data they use to make that?
I do not know off the top of my head.
I would love to see it if possible. I'm a little concerned with the information I currently have that, that number might, I mean, it could potentially be higher.
And the MA billing may also be part of third, third-party billing, something, you know, but by adding that, that person in the office, because we lost that this year, that the tracking part would be, we'd be able to track better and be able to recruit more.
Right.
And is that going to be a new employee that's being hired?
Right now, it is a present employee that we would, but we would post for that and see. But we would be able to use some of that sped funding because it would be working in there to be able to pay for that position as well.
Do districts ever have a nurse do that position, that role, like the MA billing?
Like strictly MA?
Yeah, or just, you know, if you.
Usually the, a lot of the MA billings are, have to go through the, through a nurse, through the LSN, you know, and be signed off, but usually you don't have a nurse to do those things.
Okay. I guess the reason I ask is I was wondering if, maybe if, you know, we could combine, I mean, this is just thinking outside the box, but combine a nurse with that administrative role. It would give us another RN in the district to maybe be available to sub or to answer questions or things like that, but.
But they would be housed in the district office though, right?
Yeah, because they would be working with the special educate, they're kind of also the admin assistant to the special education director, so.
Okay.
An increase in annual sports pass, right now it's $95 for, for an adult. We would ask for recommending a $20 increase, it's been a while since it's been increased, so. And then additional lease levy for gymnastics center, that was something that was not done and, or hasn't been done this year, so we would be able to do that for next year and increase, bring in $50,000 that we didn't have from this year.
And we did confirm that that's possible?
Yes.
Yeah, great, great.
Okay, so here are some of the additions and that we know we will be having to have because of our case loads, bringing back a sped teacher. I talked about overloads with teachers that have to take on extra sections. So we would have them at K, or one through five. We would also have them at the middle school in seventh grade and at the high school to make up for, making sure that we have enough sections for kids. And then you look at the moving student assist to stipend, those are not for kids. Those are for the teachers right now, teachers to fill out their FTE and so forth. They're doing the organizational work for that and collecting the names and getting them out to the teachers and so forth and then just monitoring that they show up. It's not really teaching and we've been paying a pretty expensive FTE for that. So we talked about moving that to a stipend instead. And so we figured between what we would offer for a stipend and what they're getting for that class for those sections, it would be at least a $4,000 savings. And then this, this year, we, as part of our reductions, we reduced the number of days that the counselors, they would get extra days to come in during the summer and at the end. And we, so we would be adding those days back since we're going to having less counselors. We would be adding those days back to the counselors, we still have, would have more time to be able to do some of that work that needs to be done, especially at the beginning of school year. So, and then again, the two health aides, LPNs, I was going by what, what we're paying presently for an LPN and so forth, so that, that's kind of where we're at. Any questions? Any questions?
And are the health aides, are they on the teacher contract?
Health aides are not, only the licensed school nurses.
Okay.
The others are on the support staff contract, which is the same contract that custodial and the, um, clerical and so forth.
And so if we want to hire an RN in one of those positions, then we will have, uh, will have to be more.
To hire?
An RN.
It, it, yeah, it depends on what we decide for our, you know, our track or our range.
And we could potentially get reimbursement, you know, we might find some hidden reimbursement.
Right, right.
I know that's glass half full, but.
Yep. So the total is one point six one seven that we are recommending at this time. All right, let me come over here. All right, any other questions before we go back to the agenda?
Okay, now action on resolution, reducing and discontinuing educational programs and positions.
Would it be possible to pull the, uh, LSN out for a roll call vote specifically on that position?
What would, in the pattern to do is you would, you would make a, there would have to be a motion, um, regarding that and then asking for that to be removed, um, and that would have to be seconded. And then there would have to be a call if that was the case. So whatever, whatever is moving forward at this time, um, would be, has to be a, a motion and a second, so.
A motion to pull the LSN reduction out of the resolution for a separate roll call vote.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion and a second.
So, okay, so, so what you're, um, recommending or going for, have to vote on is that you're going to go with the, just so I can clarify, go with the recommendations that the, that are before you, except that you will not, um, do the licensed school nurse, that we will continue with two licensed school nurses moving forward.
My intention was that we would still vote on reducing the LSN, but I, I wanted that to be a separate vote, that we all go on record making. Does that make sense?
So like if you, if you open the resolution, it's all listed out there?
Right.
Are you asking to pull that out?
I'm asking to pull the LSN out specifically to be a separate
But then still vote on it tonight?
And still vote on it tonight.
That That would be a, a separate resolution for, but you're still going to vote on keeping or reducing that LSN?
My proposal would be personally to change the, um, I, I would be okay reducing if the replacement was an LPN or RN.
So you can make that as the motion is that you are approving or you're making a motion to approve the recommendations by the, that are in front of you. And that, um, as part of the licensed school nurse, that you would want the, the, the position to be filled with an LSN or LPN or RN.
So my intention is I think the community and everyone deserves to know specifically how we each feel about the LSN decision. I don't know if that's an option, but that was my intention with pulling it out.
Is this going to be a roll call vote tonight anyway?
But that'll be the full list?
But lumped in with everything else, yeah.
Okay, sure, okay.
Yeah, I mean, you can certainly do that, but be a separate resolution just to reduce the LSN then.
That's what I would like.
Can we just make an amendment to the proposal right now?
I think so.
Well, the, the amendment to the proposal, yeah, you could make a motion and say that, um, you are still reducing an LSN, but you want the hire to be an RN or an LPN first. You want to go out for an RN or an LPN to, you know, to fill those, to fill that position. That, that would be, that's your, that's the amendment.
The way I personally feel about it is if we can't hire an RN or LPN to fill the health aid positions, then I would not be okay reducing an LSN. Um, I don't know if that's how others feel.
Yes, that's how I feel, but I don't know how we can guarantee that.
We can't, we can't hold somebody's future based off of the future. We have to, we have to make a decision now, one way or another.
Yeah, because we, if you were to post and, and you probably will not post until summer because it's for next year. I mean, our LSNs, our two LSNs would be working through this year, through the school year, so it wouldn't be really posted till the summer for next year or late spring because people aren't really out looking for jobs for next year right away, um, especially in that nursing area. Um, so that would be really, that would be something that you need to think about as well because you're not going to post for an LPN or an RN and not be able to find one and then go back. We'd have to post for another LSN at that time if that, that's what you would have to do. If you don't find an RN and an LPN and you want to make sure one of those three spots are, are there, you would have to post for an LSN at that time, you know, or, a- and actually, I believe our, our LSNs are on contract, are, are, are tenured as being part of that. So they would be on a, put on a ULA, uh, unrequestably of absence. So it would be their position for the next two years if, if that opens back up, so.
So that's, what I'm hearing is that that's not a feasible or responsible option, so the way I
Again, you, you, you would wait till summer and try to go, if you don't get it, you could offer it back to the person that was reduced, but if they already have another job and don't want it, then you would have
And it would be at a reduced salary then?
Well, no, you would, it, it depends, depends, I mean, they could take one of the other two positions. It would be reduced, yes, but they don't have all the obligations of an LSN then. But if you don't find someone in the summer, let's, let's say, an LPN and an RN, and you want to go back to a licensed school nurse, that person would be on a unrequestably of absence. You would have to call that person up and say, do you want to, do you want the LSN position? Because it's theirs for two years, as long as you have it.
Right.
But if they decline it, then you, you would go out then, so.
I hear what you're saying, David. It's not fair to not make a decision.
Can we amend the current proposal to say that we're replacing this LSN with at least one LPN or RN and one health aide?
I mean, and you can certainly amend it any way that you want to try to do it. And again, it goes back to, are you able to find that one? If you don't, is that, you just leave that, the position open till you find one? You don't already fill with a health aide at the time, um, you know, I
A big sticking point for me is still what my original sticking point was, that aside from the safety concerns, if, until we understand our MA reimbursement better and maximize our reimbursement and just kind of audit that whole situation, I don't think it's responsible to even honestly comment on what the reducing an LSN would actually save us. I don't feel like we have a clear understanding of that. We don't know what reimbursement we've missed out on, what we could recoup, um, what we should have been recouping. Um, so without that information, I'm not comfortable supporting the reduction of
And I would just also say that from the leadership team's perspective, um, yeah, do we, are we projecting a twenty thousand dollar savings? We are. Uh, do we want an LPN and an RN or an RN in those positions? Yes. Uh, would that mean we maybe not save as much as twenty thousand dollars? Even if it worked out the same, we feel that the, having one LSN and follow the model that many districts use and be able to, and having each, each area, each building already staffed with, with, having a person staffed in those buildings and having that LSN to be able to do the training and be able to do the monitoring of those positions and be able to fill in for those positions when they're gone, that, um, having five people in that health, health department or whatever you want to call it, instead of four, is, is a, a model that would be more efficient for, for us.
So is there a conversation about whether we accept to not have the twenty K in savings, but to instead have a position, a, a person who has at least an LPN license in one of those roles? Are we, would we, we be comfortable with this choice?
Are you asking us?
You said that as a board.
Yeah, I'm asking everybody.
So if we, if we, so it would, the requirement would be that one of the positions are filled with at least an LPN? Yeah.
Again, if we posted as it is a requirement that one of these is happening, we are holding somebody's life in the decision until we make the hiring process happen.
Right.
No, we will need to, we will need to accept right now.
Accept the reduction of the LSN?
Accept the reduction, the reduction right now. But then have, in our plan, right, to have, we're hiring at least an LPN and we are ready to pay for that.
And, and if we don't get the LPN, what's the option?
Then the position stays open till we find one?
We pay more.
Yeah, we pay more.
What happens if the next school year comes and we have these requirements and we're wanting this RN or LPN to take a aide position, so to speak, instead of a teacher contract position, then we're not going to have that position. We're going to be lack of staff.
Right.
I think that puts us at force. At that point, we would have to meet and see if we need to take what we can get if it's an aide.
Right.
And then I can tell you we'll be losing students in the district if that happens, if we have just
And I also think we could potentially be hard pressed to find an LSN that would feel comfortable staffing a district with no other licensed nursing support. I think that's a very realistic possibility.
How do the other districts do it with just one?
They have, they have LPNs. They've been able to go out and get LPNs and RNs, you know, and none of them, and their LPNs and RNs are in a range that's similar to ours. We may have to bump ours up a little bit, but they're not on a teacher contract. All their LSNs are a teacher contract. All their others are either LPNs or RNs are sitting in, just as we would have that model. And then they're being paid around the same that we would be paying them.
And, and this is only hearsay from previous board members, but my understanding is the reason we have had three and have two is when our enrollment was, was increasing so much of the time, we had the funds to be able to do it. Um, and that's how we got to more than one was we were just, we were just able to do it and it made, made sense. Um, and other schools have not been in a situation like Byron has with eighty students to join this year and sixty next year, uh, so they've never been, had an opportunity to have the disposable funds, which we now know weren't disposable at that time. Uh, but that's my understanding is there was money so we could get it. And again, that's just hearsay from previous board members.
I just want to make sure everyone understands that if we fire one LSN and hire health aides that are not licensed to take that role, we are not tracking, we do not know the answer in our district of how much reimbursement we will lose out on because an unlicensed person is providing that care. So we might lose out on twenty thousand dollars of reimbursement. We don't know the answer to that. And I personally think until we can answer that question, why would we put ourselves in a position to have a lower level of care and have the costs be a wash? Best, maybe potentially best case scenario.
And just to put this out there, I want to remind the new board members that there are four board members currently on this board that voted last year to remove the LS, any LSN from reduction. We got three, uh, the recommendation was to cut two. Four of the current board members voted and approved to only reduce one. Here it is on the recommendation list again. And with unknown mandates coming, with unknown budget from the state, um, with too many questions, uh, and, and hearing Julie Singh talk about compounding its potential that for every dollar that we don't cut this year, we may end up cutting two next year. And I personally would like to see this be our last round of cuts for this district. So I don't like anything that's on this list personally. Uh, but I'm on board to do what's best for the district. And leading up to this meeting has been extremely stressful and we've gotten amazing feedback from the community. So do I like the idea of anything here tonight? No. Am I afraid that if we don't make these reductions tonight, that we're kicking a hand down the road and it could cost us more in the future? That's where my stance goes from.
I understand what you're saying, Jeremy. Um, I do think it's important for us all to realize too, we, like, I'm very committed to making the full amount in reductions. As much as it would feel unfair to the admin, we can go back to them and say, we didn't think this was a safe reduction. We can ask them to find another twenty thousand dollars. I know that's unfair. I know that's not, I know that stinks, but we have extracurriculars we can look at. We have bussings to extracurriculars, like, um, you know, I personally would rather see something like all middle school sports go before we compromise our student's safety. So I do, there is, like you said, none of it is good, but there is fat to skim. So I don't think it's accurate to say we won't be cutting the appropriate amount if we don't make this reduction.
The other, and, and I know I'm, I'm coming across as an aseer, I'm just trying to
No, it's good, yeah.
He's spoken, um, the, the other piece of this is if we're looking at other options, what does that do for our staffing? Because if this results in additional staff cuts, we may not be able to make that decision, deciding vote until March twenty-fourth, which now eliminates the opportunity for those potential staff members to put their name into a hair and now we're impacting even further down the road.
I don't think it eliminates them from being able to do that.
I also think there's cuts we can make that while they're not great, to say the least, like they wouldn't necessarily impact staff directly.
I, I don't know that there are because I, I got with the trust or admin team and they made every possible suggestion
Well, we could cut middle school football. I mean, there's one. And I mean, obviously that's not popular. That's not what I'm advocating for, but I'm just saying there is, there are things that.
And I will also, as Jeremy said, um, you know, the leadership team, we spent many hours um, looking at different scenarios, looking at different systems, looking at, and now we are at the point where we want, people are wondering what they're going to be doing next year with all this as well. And, and we want to start that planning and we want to start placing displaced teachers and we want to be able to tell teachers that we are reducing and staff that we are reducing, um, the reality so that they can go out because it is the start of hiring season for educators and that's why we pushed it up to this point. I will tell you though that, um, you know, you, you can certainly tell us and say that you're going to, you know, eliminate this and not, and not cut this part. And down the road, if things, if people leave or whatever, we can continue to look at different ways. But I will just tell you that will be, it would be very hard for the leadership team and myself to, to, to do that. You may just have to say, we're not going to, we're going to be that much short of one point six then and hope that, hope for the best moving forward. Um, it will be really hard, um, for this leadership team to be able to come up with another amount. They worked really hard, um, we did, to get to over one point six. And we didn't have like less plan B because there was really no plan B at this time.
Mike, what do you think we need to do to figure out our MA reimbursement issue?
We can do, we can do a, a time study of what our LSNs are presently doing right now. Um, I know they're in the process of, uh, putting all that IEP and all that, all those billings together for this year as they go through it. We can do that. I am, I, I, I'll just tell you that I'm happy, if, if you are able to hire, uh, an LPN and an RN, you will, you'll be able to build all those things that, that those, that the LSNs are being built for or are getting the bills for or be able to get reimbursed for. Um, I, I guess then, I, I think, would it be a total twenty thousand dollar reduction if we didn't get a health aide in there? But you have to remember if there was health aides in there, now you're not paying them as much as the, the LPNs and so you're making even more on that end. Um, but, but the goal, I think, I think the admin team and the leadership team for next year would agree um, that having LPN and RN is, is the priority and that's what we would, that's what you will post for moving forward.
But we need to assume But we need to assume we will lose, lose out on the MA reimbursement that one LSN is currently getting, so.
Only, only if you don't have an LPN or RN.
Yeah, but I think we need to assume, take a conservative approach, right? We don't want to assume we're going to save more money than we might not and...
I will tell you that right now, if you re-categorize it, then the LPN that is working for us, you can start doing the billing for her.
Yeah. How long have we known that that person was not categorized properly?
Couple of months, to tell you the truth, because I thought we were able to do that. Again, a lot of this went through, funding went through our previous person, finance person. That would go through them and then get our CEDR, get all of our funding through, or all of our listing of special ed and, and all that. And so we are more on top of it with Dan and with Marie and then also for next year, we'll have another person to be able to, but if we move to that, you're already adding an LPN, because right now we're not getting that. So you'll already be able to add her, her services as well and then be able to go out and get another LPN or RN. I understand there's always that chance that you will not be able to do that, but other districts are, have been able to find them and keep them.
Because there was a motion and a second, can we take a roll before making the motion?
Yep, so I just want to clarify what that motion is and then we need to take the second. So your motion, which is to accept the reductions as, as presented, except for you want to take the LSN off of that list and could you want to vote on the LSN separately?
Correct.
And it was seconded.
Do you have a question with the reduction?
Yes.
And then we, if a second to remove that one?
Yep, so what we will do is pull up the resolution. We will, Carrie, can you see it?
I can see it.
Okay, so maybe you will read it and you will read all the reductions down here, except for when it comes to the LSN.
Just skip over it for now.
You will skip over that one and then we'll read the same type of resolution with the LSN, however you want that to, whoever makes a motion for that, but it'll be the same type of resolution for that position.
Okay.
Wait. So what was your question then, David, about making a motion?
I can't make another motion until the current motion is taken care of.
Correct, yes.
So just to clarify, we're going to go through all of them first, LSN last?
What, what you will do is read this and, and reducing everything except for the LSN. That is the motion that's on the table.
Okay. Whereas the School Board of Independent District Number 531 adopted a resolution on December 2nd, 2024, directing the administration to make recommendations regarding the reduction and/or discontinuation of programs and positions. And whereas said recommendations have been received and considered by the school board, be it resolved by the School Board of Independent District 531 as follows, the following programs and positions or portions thereof be discontinued. This is a lot harder than I thought. Okay, teaching staff, 12 total, seven K through five, one middle school, four high school and two counselors. Reduce tech specialists to .5 FTE, reduce days of receptionist from 190 to 183. Recode paraprofessional to sped, reduce elementary assistant principal to dean, reduce athletics activities supply budgets, eliminate, eliminate school contribution to ETS and eliminate the hurdle, reduce coaches' teams by cutting athletes, reduce state tournament coaches' clinics, reduce dance program, reduce technology supplies, reduce technology subscriptions, reduce capital budget, reduce district office fees, reduce grad credit for WSU interns, reduce operational costs and eliminate Ramsey subscription, eliminate Salt Cole subscription.
Take the other one.
Oh.
Yep.
It was out.
Yep, so she took it off before. Yep.
The motion for the adoption of the preceding resolution was duly seconded by a member of, was Nadia, and upon vote being... What's that? Okay, go ahead.
Can you tell me to do a roll call? Nadia?
Yes.
Alicia?
Yes.
David?
Hi.
Hi.
Sorry, I can't hear very well. Kelly?
Yes.
Carrie?
Hi.
Lisa?
Yes.
Jeremy?
Aye.
Did you put it on the, on the here? Did you put it on the agenda?
I, no, I just shared it with you earlier.
Can you put it on the agenda? Okay, so now we need a motion regarding the, the LSN, what you would like to do with that position.
I would move to reduce the LSN position with the caveat that we put preferred on the postings for the health aides, for LPN and RN.
Second.
Do you, sorry, I couldn't hear David.
You want to say it a little bit louder, David?
Yep, I, I move to reduce the LSN position with the caveat that the postings for the health aides say preferred LPN and RN.
Right, thank you.
And Carrie had seconded it.
Okay, so any, any further discussion?
Yes, do we want to strengthen that language a little bit and say that we want to, we are committed to hiring at least an LPN and, and/or RN for one of those roles?
Is it a requirement for hiring? Can we do that?
Well, there's a motion on the table about making it, as David had said, it's been seconded, so you'll have to vote. That, that would be the wording that would be used. And then if people don't want to use that wording, you would, you know, vote, vote the resolution as, you know, vote against it and then come up with something different. So that was the, that was the motion that was out there and seconded. Any other discussion there, Amy?
Is that the whole thing? Because I don't have it.
Yes, go ahead.
Whereas the School Board of Independent District Number 531 adopted a resolution on December 2nd, 2024, directing the administration to make recommendations regarding the reduction and/or discontinuation of programs and positions. And whereas said recommendations have been received and considered by the school board, be it resolved by the School Board of Independent Number 531 as follows, that the programs and positions or portions thereof be discontinued. Oh, I'm sorry, teaching staff, one licensed school nurse with the caveat to hire LPN or RN for the position.
I thought it was preferred.
Preferred, yeah, that was what it is. The caveat to...
Preferred hire.
Have a preferred hire. The preferred, the caveat to, to have a preferred hire or, yeah, preferred hire of a LPN. Just so the words preferred is in there.
Yeah, so the, the teaching staff, one licensed school nurse, preferred hire of LPN, RN for the position.
Ready for a roll call?
Yep.
Nadia?
And I'm sorry, is that, do we also have to say that we will hire an additional health aide here? Like, what does it say?
No, that...
We're just eliminating one school nurse?
This is only one, it's up to...
This is just for the reductions. It's not about, it's just saying that when we do hire, that we would be having a preferred for that, but this, this is for reductions made. So we are, we are reducing the, that's what the resolutions are for, not for adding people at this time. It's for the reductions. We're reducing the licensed school nurse, but there's a caveat that when it is to be replaced, that there would be a, a preferred of a LPN or an RN.
I'm sorry, can I go last? Thank you. No?
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Can I go last? Thank you.
Okay, Alicia?
No.
David?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Carrie?
Aye.
Lisa?
No.
Jeremy?
Aye.
Nadia?
So it's already four, right? And it needs to be majority? And now, meaning it's already passed.
Did you say no?
Yes.
Okay.
All right. Thank you. Sorry, I meant the wrong one. All right, so we'll go to the next one then?
Action on elementary school dean, TOSA job description slash position.
Okay, so one thing that we would like to do as part of the moving forward is to, as mentioned earlier, we have a position right now at the primary school that's the assistant, K-5, I should say, it's a K-5 assistant principal and AD, our activities director, is doing both roles. The leadership team is recommending or had recommend, is, would like to move the AD back to the high school and then make the position as a dean at the primary, at, at the K-5 level. We would, so we would have a K-5 principal and we would have a K-5 dean, but also part of that dean, that dean would be on teacher assignment, so there would be part of the teacher contract. There would be some extended days. Right now, we do have TOSA agreement for our instructional coaches and so they would follow that same type of instructional or TOSA agreement. And so as part of this as well, we would be looking for this person to be our literacy lead, because we still are doing our read, the Read Act, and then also working with a K-5 curriculum as a teacher on special assignment. Again, the difference between a dean and an assistant principal is that an assistant principal can supervise staff, can do their evaluations, can do suspensions of, of students and so forth, where a dean is there to support, support teachers, deal with maybe some student behavior if they get sent down to the office and just be available to help. So when the K-5 principal is in one building, the dean would be in the other building helping if there were, mostly student behaviors and, and supporting staff. When they're not doing those two items, they'll also be working with our Read Act, continue to work with Read Act and some of the curriculum, K-5 curriculum that we have been doing as well, since we still have that, since we did not fill with the district curriculum court, director, we didn't bring that back this year, so we still have some split duties for people to take on. So what we would like to do is to approve this as our job description and then we will be posting for this position tomorrow internally and then we'll see who applies. They have until Monday to apply and then we would do interviews and, and that would help us start filling in spots of who gets, who's being displaced and be able to fill in spots so we can start planning our, our leadership team, our administrators and staffs can start planning on, on the next steps. So do you have any questions regarding the dean role?
Was this description like an MSBA model policy or model description or...
It was actually one that we've, that we've used in the past, because we've had deans in the past.
Okay.
We just moved it from more at the secondary level to responsibilities at the elementary level.
And what is our normal, I guess, process? Do we have the attorney review things like this or do we just look at it if it's reasonable?
Well, because we've had it in the past and we, all we're doing is changing some of the secondary duties to elementary duties, then, yeah, we don't need to have them look at it.
Okay.
And we have already said this already, but is there a specific licensure that goes along with this that they have to have?
Nope, it's preferred that they have an admin license, but it's not, it's not required. Nope. So if we could have a, a motion and take action on, on approving this, then we can move forward as an admin team.
I motion to approve the dean of students posting.
Second.
Okay, a motion and a second has been made. Take a roll call.
Jeremy?
Aye.
Lisa?
Aye.
Carrie?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
Alicia?
Aye.
Nadia?
Aye.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, last thing is adjournment.
Move to adjourn the meeting.
Can we just say, just one more thank you to everyone? You know, this, like, reading that list was hard to hear. I think we all felt it and, like, we know these are real lives and just please take good care, all of you. Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn was made by David.
Second.
Second.
Okay, so then Jeremy?
Aye.
Lisa?
Aye.
Carrie?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
Alicia?
Aye.
Nadia?
Aye.
All right, meeting is adjourned.